Good evening and welcome to the Curriculum Evaluation Committee on Monday, November 13th, 2023. It is 6:07 and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. We have in attendance this evening Mr. Neil Claffey.
Present.
Sharon Gilio.
Here.
Ms. Christina Darling.
Here.
Jessica Brown, that is me, we are here. Ms. Sharon Gilio is serving as the alternate on this committee. And we do have a quorum with Mr. Claffey, Ms. Darling, and Ms. Brown. We also have in attendance Dr. Sarfati. And we have some esteemed guests from the National Public School District. So if we'd like to dive right into the meeting, the first thing we have is Mr. Jamie Healy and the students for a presentation.
Great, thank you so much. We have Mr. Healy with us and then we have four of his students. Mr. Healy is going to talk about a project that the students have been working on.
Thank you for having us, first of all. It's hard to get recognition in manufacturing sometimes. We do great things, but people don't really see it. And this is a great way of actually pointing it out, so I appreciate that. This project right here came about at the very beginning of the school year. A little history behind the project, I have special education right across the hallway from me. They're my neighbors, so I reach out and help my neighbors. And through the last year of setting up my program, we got to be friends. One of the people from there asked me in a hallway if I could have something adapted to that so that a gentleman in a wheelchair could push it, because that's all he wanted to do was to push it. And many times somebody asks me something like that, the answer is obviously yes. So I said, okay. So I start thinking, how can I get my students involved? Because we're a new program, these guys don't have the machining skills yet. And I do say yet, because if this project came a year from now, I wouldn't be even, I wouldn't even have any part of it. They would have done everything on there. So basically what I am is I was their part maker. I gave them the cart for a day and pencils and papers and everything. And I said, I want your designs. I want to know what you see when this project is here. And I laid out the, the basic description and had to be lightweight. It had to fold up. It couldn't be, you know, a big, huge, clunky thing and stuff like that. And it still had to serve its purpose. So they all drew diagrams and came up with their ideas. It took me a couple of weeks actually to go through them, because I had to look at them quite a few times. But what I did basically was I put a puzzle together of all of their best ideas. So that whole design is theirs. I just made the parts for them. That's all I did. All the real work is the design and the functionality of it. And they, I gotta say, they came up with an absolutely great design. I was blown away with it. It was better than anything that popped into my head and I've been doing this for 40 years. So I said, this is all right, you know? So I made it for them. And right now, when I went and picked up the cart today, I couldn't actually get it, because we wanted to bring it back to the classroom and look at it. And I wanted to give them some time to analyze and think about what they wanted to say. We, we couldn't get it because it was being used. They're using it all the time. They use it on field trips. They use it on emergency evacuations, things like that. All the wheelchair students can push it and everything else. And there's nothing but smiles. That's all that there is. So the, the people that we made it for are extremely happy and blown away that, you know, that we did what we did. But the credit actually goes to these guys. This is, it's their ideas. The reason I like this project is because it, it, it covers everything that a manufacturer needs to know. You need to know how to think. You need to know how to design. You need to know how to use your imagination. And you need to know how to turn it into a product. The turning it into the product part is what they're learning, running the machines, making the parts. But the rest of it, they've already got a really good hold of, and I couldn't be more proud of them.
All right, so I do have some questions. These are the ambassadors from North and South who are taking its advanced machine.
Advanced manufacturing.
Advanced manufacturing. So the first ambassador that we're going to hear from is Nazra. And Nazra is a North stu-, a North student who works on her car with her dad. And she talked about how she's taking advanced manufacturing because she wants to get a job at some point that allows her to build car parts. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
So Nazra, how do you feel knowing that your team's designs were, were used to help classmates?
For me, knowing that my team's designs and thoughts were used to make a positive impact on someone really brought me a sense of fulfillment and con- convince, wait. It was a heartwarming, it was heartwarming to witness how our creation improved someone's disadvantage. The knowledge that our hard work, oh, sorry, that our hard work contributed to making someone's life easier and better was honestly truly rewarding. Seeing the positive feedback and gratitude from our teacher further reinforces the significance of our design. This motivation made me feel like I was making a change to society. And I hope to be making a difference in people's lives, including everyone, is very important to me, because I want to make sure everyone's needs are met. So let's try to make life a little less hard. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the next student that we're going to hear from is Mayori. We already established that Mayori is bilingual, which is a gift. Mayori is an honor student and she currently works on refinishing her basement with her dad. And she also loves to paint. So my question for Mayori is this. If you were making another handle adapter for the same cart, what would you change, if anything, and why?
Well, sorry. Well, I wouldn't really change, I wouldn't change anything, because I believe, we, I believe and I know that it's highly functional. Should I give the demonstration? So the demonstration is that here, this, these knobs allow it to tighten and to loosen it, allowing. Yeah, so they, they can come off like this, see? And if you push them, this gets pushed inside. So it can adapt whether, how far or how short it needs to be. And because it folds over like this, it's not obstructing away to anyone. See?
That's a good design.
For this, this, these two are also helpful, because they can rest their hands like this, whether they want it like this or like this. It all depends on the person that is pushing the car. So it doesn't really obstruct them in any way. Hold on, sorry. Things like that. I mean, unless, if you want to change the color to match the same color as this, then that would be something you would want. No, I'm so sorry. Like that, see? And then you can also tighten these two knobs, so it doesn't move upwards, but they have to be tighter. So it doesn't, like that. That's pretty much it. I think it is. It's highly functional, like I said. Nothing would be changed to it, unless, like, like I said, the color to it, but that's, that's it.
So I wonder if you'll be taking customizable orders next year? That'd be pretty amazing.
Yes, I can. Do you have any?
I mean, I like pink, but. All right, so next up we have Riley. And Riley is from Nashua North. And if anybody is, is watching tonight, Riley is looking for an internship at a machine shop. Did I nail that, Riley?
That's correct.
Great, okay. So Riley, when another similar project comes up again, what changes could be made to make the process easier or better?
So this project, me personally, I feel like Mr. Healy was a genius. I did not know that he'd be taking all of our ideas and combining them into one good thing. I thought that was very smart. And it came out to be a very good design. As for making it better, um, the process itself could have some more student interaction. Say that maybe one day we could go in and have a discussion, so the students themselves can analyze another's design. And they could be the ones to pick out the, the benefits of that and see how they could apply it into one. So instead of Mr. Healy's genius brain putting it all together, the student can be the one to basically get their brain turned and figure out how to put it all together.
That's great. Great feedback from Mr. Healy, too.
That's the next project.
I like the working collaboratively with the students. That's great. It's a great critique.
So next up we have Steven. And Steven is currently a student at Nashua High School South. And he actually works in manufacturing at a machine shop in Nashua, right, Steven?
Yeah, I do.
All right, so my question for you is, do you think that this project is accurate compared to real world situations in the manufacturing trades and wha-, and how? And especially with your experience?
Definitely very realistic. Like, at the shop I work at, we've had to do custom things like this. Like, for one of our buddies, Mike, he has like seven different nicknames. He recently broke his leg and he can't really, you know, lift things. So I had to take a sawzall and just cut all the carts down, remake new parts to adjust it. So now he can only use one leg to push it around. So it's got like this little bench comes out like this, wheels cut down in lower heights so he can scoot around on it. It's fun. Corporate does not like it, because I kind of didn't ask for their permission. But, you know, it's great. Especially with that, I came in the first day and he was like, hey, we're gonna make a cart. And I was like, okay. It was before when I found out it was for like our neighbors. I couldn't ask for better neighbors right across the hall, because, you know, my brother has special needs. And I, it was great when I saw this thing made. Fortunately, I was out the day it got put together. But, ah, makes me very happy. Really does.
That's great. That's amazing. All right, I have a couple more questions for you all. With regard to your class, what are you looking forward to learning next? Or what are you looking forward to doing next with regards to building? Jump in.
Well, for me personally, it'd be like something like these, one, two, three blocks. I use these all the time at work, like changing tools out of like a CNC. Change those on anything, but what I'm most excited for is more so the designing, because, yeah, it's half the thing and learning how to program, so that way I can have a few choice words when the engineers, it's, come down with some whack design.
Me personally, um, I'm excited for the 3D printing, because I could print out whatever I want. It's gonna be a fun little side thing.
Seems to be a theme here. You guys kind of like the freedom and flexibility of manufacturing.
Oh, the freedom's definitely great. You know, if you, if, think of anything, you got the tools to make it.
Following up on the, if you got the tools to make it, you can make it. I believe in that so, so much, because I have the opportunity to be in this class and the opportunity to start working on my car, since I, I love my car. She's my baby. She's so beautiful. But I get to make new things and I get to tell stories about how I made parts of my car. It's better than just buying the parts and putting them on, right? You have to have a story to tell. You have to have like history with your car, to know your car, to know exactly what's in it and around it, to make it you, instead of just someone else's idea. So in this class, I can make up my own ideas, make up my own tools, make up my own kids, like, you know? Make little cute things, sell them to my friends, or bring them to people in need, kids who have no homes, like little toys for them. You can make that, too. Make someone's day, you know? Either helpful or cute, it's whatever, as long as there's a smile on someone else's face, for sure.
Going off of what they all said, it's definitely true. They, it is very interesting to be in this class. Personally, for me, I like that all the parts we make, it's ours. Like, we're proud that we made it with our own hands. And we had help, too, along the way with that as well. And I also like it that if we do have the right tools, all we need is time as well. Time and skills, you can do anything with all that. It's also important, anything.
Okay, so I'm gonna go off script for a minute. What if you have kids who are thinking about maybe pursuing an option in the CTE program, but don't really know if it's for them? What would you say to somebody who's considering either your program, your class, or any of the other programs?
I assume this is jumping, so what I would say is the same thing that my dad said to me, my uncle said to me. Not only does it pay well, you get to meet a lot of new friends, make anything you want. Like, let's say, like, one of my buddies at the shop, he makes like these little, little robot guys. And then he'll go down to like the, the preschool, it's just down the way, like, pass them out around Christmas time. I've made a couple of them. It's, it's amazing. I highly, highly recommend getting into it, especially with Mr. Healy teaching it. He doesn't pay me.
So what I would say is, manufacturing in general is very, a very broad term. Because in our class alone, we've got, we've got things ranging from working with your hands, like bare hands, to 3D printing. So you could have stuff, you know, you can have like an old machine with dials and stuff, you can work on that, or you can work with a computer to make a print. It's a very, very wide range. And honestly, there's a high chance you could find something you like in there. So they should definitely give it a shot.
Manufacturing to me, if I was introducing it to someone who might want to take an interest to it, I would basically tell them that you have the freedom to do whatever you want, to make whatever you want, to use it however you want. Whether to give it to someone, keep it for yourself, you know, like a little memory, like, oh, I did that, to make them feel better about themselves, you know? And also, manufacturing is a beautiful thing, to be honest. To me, it's a beautiful thing. You get to explore more, you get to learn something new every day, something interesting, something that can make you money. Everybody loves money, but it's a really beautiful thing. Create what's on your mind, and you could get money for that. You never know, someone might be thinking about the same thing, but they don't have the right education for it, or the right tools for it. They might not know. So why not join the manufacturing club? Like, come on.
It's more, it's creative, like, you have that freedom to create. And if you have an idea or picture of what you want to do, just write it down, like, draw it on a piece of paper, and you're able to actually do it. And you do it with your own hands. Like Nazra said, you have that achievement, like, that pride. Like, yes, I did that. I did that with my own hands, like I said, that you're able to do it with yourself. And of course, with guidance from other people, like, what to do and what not to do, as well as safety precautions and whatnot.
Yes, thank you for talking about safety.
Yes, we are actually very, say, everything is based in safety. It's just, I make sure they leave with their fingers every day. You know what I mean? That's like very important. We, I give these guys, in order to create, you have to have a freedom to think and be. And that's our environment. So everybody, I'm glad you guys all relaxed and everything, it's, it's wonderful. Now, that's, half the battle was getting through all of that stuff. As far as creating goes and their freedom, as long as it's within the school rules and stuff, I really don't, I would encourage their projects over mine. I have projects for them, tools to make, like one, two, three blocks and stuff that he's talking about. And he will be making some, and he treating them and grinding them and everything. So, yay, he'll be happy about that, right? These are functional tools. When they make those, he's gonna be using this thing for the rest of his life. Like, it won't wear out. He'll use it for the rest of his life. So one day he'll be old like me and looking at it, and he'll be like, I remember when I made this in high school, you know? So you get, that sense of pride lasts a lifetime. It really does. But you do need to be freedom to, to think and create and use your imagination, instead of grow up, stop using your imagination. I say, don't grow up, just get older, be responsible, but keep your imagination. So it took us some time to get to flowing again, and I'm really happy to see it flowing now. And all these answers that you guys are giving me, I'll, don't worry, I'm remembering. I'll remember. Thank you.
Well, thank you all so much. The last thing I just wanted to add is that I know that there's a lot of math involved in manufacturing. I've even seen calculus problems on, on Mr. Healy's board. So it's an amazing application, example of application of math skills, and it's great to see.
Does anyone from the committee have any questions or comments? Darling?
Okay, so I've got to say, I have a design request. I have a Newfoundland that has been learning how to haul things. He can now pull a wagon, but I need a better design so that he can also cart the kids with the wagon. So I, I give you guys about a year, Christmas next year. He might be ready to pull with the kids by then, maybe? And he's got to be able to navigate an elevator. Good luck. That being said, you guys have just blown me away with your answers, with the fact that I heard you guys encouraging each other when, when each of you were up. That was not my memory of what school looked like. And thank you guys for kind of restoring some of that hope that I have. And I, I can't even imagine the great things you guys are going to do. And Mr. Healy, you must be a very good teacher. You're getting there? We, we have you for another 20, 30 years, right?
I've been in industry for 40 years. I've only been teaching for, this is my second year, so I'm getting there.
Wow, I'm impressed, a second year teacher.
My program was shut down for a long time. All of my students, the 16 students I have right now, I call them my pioneers, because these guys are the ones that are helping me write this program. I can plan so much, but you can only plan so much. And the things that, the bumps in the road that we run into and everything, these guys get to experience it with me. So this is actually a really special group of students, because they're my pioneers. They're, they're helping me build a better program, as well as me teach them how to make a living for themselves and, in the right way.
Which is a life lesson in manufacturing in general, as when the gentleman mentioned about, sometimes you'll come with an engineer that has a design for something, but the manufacturers might understand that there's something else. And you're building the program and troubleshooting on your, on the fly. I think that's fantastic.
Part of my program is I realize that not everybody's going to become a machinist. I realize that. And I encourage them to go whatever pathway they want. Manufacturing is a hub that shows them a world of plastics. It shows them a world of welding. It shows them a world of grinding. It shows them a world of quality assurance. All of these worlds all come together outside of school, and that's how the world runs. We're all just little cogs along the process. But if they don't understand where those cogs are, or how they're connected, they can't make good decisions. So some of these guys will go become some of the best engineers on the planet, because they know how to build these things. So when they design them, they design them user-friendly. They design them to be made-friendly, instead of, you know, somebody asking for some crazy geometry, just because the computer output it and they don't know the difference. These guys will know the difference because of where they started. And that is my goal as a manufacturing teacher.
Yes, Ms. Gilio?
This may sound really naive, but what is the one, two, three block? What is the function of it?
So the one, two, three block, it's a, how I use it, it's used for two things at my shop. One, to like change tools, measure stuff, if you need a quick ruler. And two, if the vending machine gets something stuck.
Cut the vending machine part out, that's okay. We'll talk about that. No, this is, this is one inch by two inch by three inch. And in a machine shop, you deal with all precision. So when you grind these, you grind these in sets. So if I had something really large to put on a table, which a machine may be this big or bigger, I ran even larger ones than that. But I could put this thing down over here, and I could put another one over here, and I could set my part on here, and I know I'm two inches off this way. Or you can use it as a gauge. If it's exactly two inches, you can check your two-inch micrometer with it. Or you could check your one-inch micrometer, or you could check your three-inch micrometer. But it's a precision tool. It's ground perfectly square, perfectly flat, and it is one inch by two inch by three inch, not a little bit over, a little bit under, you know what I mean? It's just a tool that you use for a lot of different things. Set it in the bottom of a vice and put a part on top of it, you know? And if you have a step in a part that's one inch off, you could take one this way and you could turn another one this way and set it down, and it's gonna be sitting there perfectly level on those. So you use them for a lot of different things. But they're very useful and you use it like continuously. Like I said, he'll make some and he'll have them for his lifetime.
That's fantastic. There's so much value in that. All right, if there's not anything else, this has been, I've sat through a lot of these committee meetings, been here four years. This is one of probably the most interesting presentation and unique that I've seen. And I love the fact that this design is so user-friendly, but also so versatile for people of different heights and arm lengths and comfort levels. I just think it was really thoughtful and I really appreciate that you guys came up with this together as a team. It's great.
And I just wanted to add one last thing. So the delivery of the presentation tonight came from the kids. I got the questions, they, 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 they let me know what order they were going to go in. And so this is all them, and it's pretty remarkable.
Actually, can I have one more thing, just to plug the program? What's like the average starting salary for a machinist? It's pretty solid, right?
Nowadays, yes. Nowadays, within 10, 20 miles of where we're standing right now, you could probably find 30 or 40 jobs. He works in a machine shop right now.
So, yeah, the starting salary is like really good, like, we're talking 22, 25. Down at my, where my uncle works, they just hired some guy to come in and just measure parts, you know, like, take your block micrometer for 35 an hour. It is a very high-paying job, but it comes with a couple scars, you know?
And this is, and this is a career that you can get out of high school from a machine programming?
Yes.
I love it. Thank you.
You don't need college, you don't need, you can leave from here and go straight into a machine shop and make a living. After two years with my program, you'll be able to go in just about any machine shop and get a job doing whatever you would like, pretty much.
I, my dad is the, like, living example that he, when he was out in AZ doing nothing, you know? He, one day, walked into a machine shop and just said, is there anything I can help do? And now like 40 something years later, now it's the family trade. I work with him, he's the greatest father I could ever ask for, you know?
I asked for sponsorship for my program and I got a job offer for $42 an hour.
Yeah.
I don't teach for the money, obviously, but I'm like, no, thank you.
Like, can the, can the teachers sign up for your classes?
Yes, they can, as a matter of fact. I'm working on adult education, but I gotta get everything else going first. But yes, I'm working on adult education. So yes, you can, come on down.
I love it.
Got a block free? Come on down.
All right, building the program as well, thank you.
You could also learn Hard Knock style.
We'll call your dad. All right. Hey, we really appreciate you guys being here tonight. Is there anything else, anything, anybody like to add? No?
Come down to manufacturing.
Oh, yeah, come on down.
Yes, thank you so much, everybody. Really appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Healy.
So. All right. So as our wonderful guests head out, and we'll allow you, you guys can sit in the audience or leave for the evening, we really appreciate you being here. The next thing on the menu is a presentation from Kate Marcott, is that her name? And Lori Kotu, about the recommendations for changes to the 2425 program of studies. I gotta say, I love the level of student intervent, interaction and
I gotta say, I love the level of, um, student intervent, uh, interaction and collaboration for that program. I mean, it really is inspiring. So I really like what you're doing. We'll send you an email. I absolutely will, but if you look up the little radio wagon, radio flyer, what? Yes. That's what we use currently. Thank you, guys.
Alright.
We'll, we'll make sure we clear it so we don't get anybody in trouble, uh, me especially.
Hold that thought, guys. Um, alright, so thank you so much for being here and I'm just gonna send it over to you.
Hello, um, I'm Lori Kuchu. Um, we're here, uh, this year, uh, once again to talk about the program of studies for the 2425 school year. And we have some changes, not many this year, uh, three changes. And, um, two are in science and one is in special education. So, um, we'll just go through the changes and see if you have any questions.
So just, uh, tonight, we're going to be talking about the science department changes. Yeah.
Just, are there other changes next month coming for next year, for social studies or anything? Or is this, is this the only ones coming?
So I can't speak to that. I did receive, um, three changes, but we decided to bring two before the committee tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you give some highlights of, um, what the changes to the program are right now?
Sure. So the two that we'll highlight tonight, we have advanced placement physics C and meteorology. So both in the science department, um, both a little bit different. But each meeting needs of various students, I think teachers found, you know, saw a need and want to meet it for our students. And, um, in addition to meeting the needs of students that will help meet graduation requirements. We remember we've added a science experiment, uh, experience, sorry. And, um, both will, will meet that.
I was just gonna add that, um, physics C is really meeting a need for our students who have been doing this course as an ELO for many years. Um, so we're finally wanting to bring it on as a course as, um, a way to meet the needs of our students who want to be engineers. We have kids at both north and south that want to take this course. So bringing the course forward is just a way to support them.
And, um, I see your prerequisite is AP Calculus. Does it have to be specifically AP Calculus or can it just, it can be advanced place? Or I'm sorry, can it also be honors calculus or any other version of calculus?
For this course, we really need students with a AP Calculus background.
Which is a full-year course.
Yeah.
And so my other question would that be, I'm guessing this is primarily gonna be a senior course? Because to even get in your math studies up to, can students get to AP Calculus as juniors?
They can.
Alright. Um, does anyone have a question? Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Claffey.
I just was looking at the program of studies. So right now there's, um, AP Physics 1 and 2. And then this would be, I, I, will 2 still run? How, what's, what is 2 and how does it relate to BC? I mean, um, yeah, BC?
So physics 1 and 2 are, um, a continuation. So students take physics 1 and they go on to physics.
I meant AP Physics 1.
AP Physics, I'm sorry, AP Physics 2. They start with AP Physics 1 and they continue to AP Physics 2 if they so choose. These courses, AP Physics 1 and AP, AP Physics 2 are, um, bio-based or for students who want to go into the medical career or a, a scientific career. This physics C course is specific for students who want to be engineers or computer scientists. So that's why we, we think it's important.
And do most universities accept advanced, advanced placement credits for physics?
It depends on the university. So we, we don't really have any input into what the universities will accept. Um, we do have kids do research before usually taking AP exams because we don't want them to take the exam if they're not gonna get the credit for it. So we do do, do a little research with students if they want us to. But, um, we don't really know at the time the kids start taking the course if they're gonna get the AP credit or not.
And that was my last question. Are they required to take the AP exam?
We strongly suggest it. So we want students to continue through and take a, you know, a big test like this. But, um, sometimes students just choose not to because they're not gonna get the credit. But they get the distinction on their transcript.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions about physics? I mean, I have a lot of questions about physics, but, um, not about this course. Alright, um, and the, the next proposal is meteorology. Okay. Do, do we need them individually? Or it could be one. Okay. Alright, so we'll go ahead and we'll probably put it in one combined motion if, unless someone is opposed to that on the committee. But, um, the other course is meteorology to replace plant science.
So forgive me, I, I am new, so I will do my best here. But, um, meteorology is replacing plant science that has not run, I don't think, for a few years. Um, and again, this class will, will help meet the additional science requirement and can be a math experience as well. So students could take that as, in their senior year as a math experience. So it's sort of hitting two things at the same time, which I think is important. I also think that the content, I think, um, students are interested in this, this content right now. Weather and, and things that are going on real world around them. So I think, again, we're meeting that need of, of engaging students in this content.
Um, anyone have any questions about meteorology? Alright, and it seems like in New England, we'd have lots of opportunities to do, um, lots of hands-on study or something, especially this really weird rainy summer. Okay, so, oh, oh, I see. Also, there's a cost to this one. Um, curriculum development cost of $400. Can you, is that, that's not per student?
No, that is a cost just for the teacher to create the curriculum for the course. So generally, teachers would work over the summer to do that.
Alright, so that's just developing the curriculum. Okay. I think that's acceptable to me. Alright, so I'd be looking for a motion, um, to approve the changes to the 2425 program of studies to the science department as presented.
So moved.
Alright, Ms. Darling, can I get a second?
Yes, second.
Mr. Claffey, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, all opposed? None? Alright, motion passes, three to zero. And, um, anything else to add, ladies? Alright. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. And I will just tell you, when I was at UMass, I took a meteorology course thinking it was like gonna be the easiest course I've ever taken. Yes, there's a lot of math involved. I didn't know this when I was a kid.
Great. Um, Dr. Sarfey, anything else for this evening?
No, thank you so much.
Oh, this was quick and speedy. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 6:45 PM. Thank you very much.